Called this regular meeting to a council order here at City Hall, April 2nd, 2019 at 7:00 P.M. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I had one, uh, to get a recession for employee performance, uh, for, I'd say 10 minutes.
Are all of these employee performances?
Well...
No, except for the last one.
Okay, added executive session, employee performance for 10 minutes. Any other additions? Okay.
Got one, uh...
Oh, another one, okay.
It was to... What was it, John?
He wants to discuss under me that email I sent regarding the land bank.
Can't we just do that under you, or...
Well...
We could add it on... Oh, wait, no, no, never mind.
We just add it to the agenda so that everybody's okay with discussing it.
Okay. You want to put that under new business now?
Is that what we...
Under John.
It doesn't matter where you put it. You can put it under new business, or you can put it underneath.
Let's go ahead and put it under John.
Yeah.
All right, and that's what we have, okay. Okay, any other additions to the agenda? Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments today?
Do we need to add appointment of council member?
You want to do that right now? I thought I was going to do that during the mayor's, uh, report.
But you've added under your agenda items, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Then you've got to move to amend the agenda.
So we put that under me and then just move to...
And, right, and then you're moving to amend the agenda, like, with all three things.
Adding new councilman recommendation under me. Any other additions? Okay. This, John, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just consensus, or we need to, you know, we need to...
You might need to move to...
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the additions to the agenda? There you have it, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote carries, three o. Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Do we have any comments this evening?
Well, it was a short complaint, if that's what you consider a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm Tom Augustus, I live on 823 North Pearl. I've lived there for over 25 years. I got my water bill today, and my water went up. My, uh, not by price, but for 25 years, I've used one or two units, whatever those units are, it doesn't say. But I've used one or two every month for 25 years, and suddenly I used eight this month. So I come down here to complain, and she tells me that, she said, "Well, you got a leak." I said, "I do not have a dripping faucet, my stool's not leaking, and if there's a leak outside, the yard should be wet," and it's not. I says... So then she pinpointed on her machine and found when it was, it was the 5th of March. I was home, I have one outside hydrant, so I, and on her graft, it just goes beep beep, like that. I go home and I go to J.D., my landlord, and I said, "Did you get any water out of my hydrant the first week of March for any reason?" He said, "No, I ain't been over there." So my contention is, the meter messed up, because my water usage, I was at the house that day, I was working on books, there was no water used. And basically, she told me, "Well, it went through the meter, it had to go through the meter." Well, meters break down too, and that's my contention, is something's wrong with the meter. Or something was wrong with it for a little bit, because, because you look at her thing, it just goes across and goes... And then J.D. mentioned to me that all three of his has done that, all three of his properties, so...
Didn't J.D. come back and say that he had a leak?
I don't know what he did. Hey, I'm just telling you what he told me when I went and asked him if he used mine. But, but I have no leak.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, can't we send a meter in, and if it checks out just fine, then they, the customer pays the, whatever it is?
Seventy-five dollars?
Seventy-five dollars. I think that's what we've done in the past, Tom.
Well, I don't think that should be the customer's responsibility.
Well...
I mean, that's, that's more than the water cost, and I've heard this from others, that the people just automatically pay these when they happen, and I, to me, that's, that's kind of like dictatorship. You're telling them exactly what they have to do, when it's your meter, it worked fine until you put that electronic one in, you know?
If it's running through the, if the water is running through the meter, that means the water went past a certain point, though.
I agree with what you're saying, but I'm saying the meter can mess up without water going through it. Everything can break down, I guarantee you.
The meter's been tested since then.
The meter has been tested.
We tested, we tested it today.
Oh, what do you mean, we tested?
Like, we sent it off for a test.
Already?
No, not like the test, but the communication back and forth.
Oh.
So, if it messed up for...
I mean, it's part, it's part of the gamble, because if we send it off and, and it works perfectly fine, it's on you, but if it's broken...
I know, I understand, I understand what you're saying and what you're doing, but my contention is, 25-plus years of it never changing, nothing changed. I guarantee you, I did not fill a swimming pool in my backyard on March the 5th, you know? Because that's a lot of water compared to two jumping to eight. And that's, I mean, the fact that it works fine now, apparently, is, is... I'm just voicing this complaint, because I personally think that, you know, it's, it should be on your end.
Well, I mean, put yourself in our shoes, if somebody wants to go and fill up a pool and come back and tell us that...
I understand.
You're in a tough spot, trying to see what figure, what to figure out here, but I think it's fair to send off the meter, and it's just a gamble, if that's what you want to do. Otherwise, I mean, I...
No, I'll just, it's too high anyway, it'll get mowed again. But that's, that's not my doings either, I didn't set it. But, all right, I just wanted to express my complaint.
Yeah.
So I can do that.
I guess we just try to put the best equipment in, in the meter, the meter can that we can, and...
I know, but then, but things break down, and it shouldn't be my fault to fix it. I don't have to go fix your city truck when it breaks down. See, that's, that's my contention there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, any other citizens' complaints? Okay.
How much money were we talking?
Forty-five dollars.
All right, moving on, consent agenda. Approve minutes, regular council meeting, March 19th, 2019. Second. Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
For the... Excuse me? What was it, the, approve the minute?
Approve the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All those in favor? Motion carries. Corporation ordinance, 4-2-19, and the amount of $89,199.81.
I had, I had a question on, uh, I don't know, why, why do we have to have, like, the gassing utilities on that gas building? What am I...
In the Dylan's building?
Because if we shut the water off, we don't need any heat. I mean, I just feel like we've had that building, what, two years now or so? And I just seen the gas bill's a hundred bucks. I mean, I just, why are we, why do we have the utilities on?
Right.
I mean, we can shut the water off and not have to heat the place.
I thought we did turn those off, yeah?
No, my complaint was the lights continued to stay on, and I think we finally got those off.
Right.
On now?
Okay.
What?
I thought we talked about at some point that the gas would be turned off.
Not a bad idea.
You know, I, I think we kind of decided that, you know, even though you shut off the water, there's still water in traps, there's still water in the pipes and the low spots, and...
I mean, it...
I mean, you can shut it off in the summertime, but I doubt the cans of gas is really going to like that. I think most of that is probably a commercial rate for a meter, just beyond, you know, like...
Because, I mean, if you add up how much, I don't, I would like to know how much you use in two years.
Yeah.
I mean, is there not a way to, if you, if we hired a plumbing company to go in there and just winterize it, we'd still save money by telling them to go winterize it, and just let's have it shut off, period, is my opinion on it.
Or we could find something to do with it and sell it.
Yeah, but right now, I'm worried, I don't want to be paying...
I mean, you can always put antifreeze in the traps, you can always blow the water lines out for the most part.
I mean, how do you feel about that? It's just wasted money to me.
Probably if it was mine, I'd pour antifreeze in it.
Yeah.
Trying to shut them off.
You can't really blow the traps out, because then you're on sewer gas coming back up in, which is explosive. So you can't really do that, so your choice would be to probably put antifreeze in the system, right? You do more plumbing than I do.
Truth be known, there's probably no water in the traps right now anyway.
Probably not.
It's all evaporated, but, um...
I mean, I'd like, that's, what I'd like to see is just hire the local plumbing company to go in there, winterize it, and shut it all off, is my opinion. I don't know.
It's probably been, what, over two years now, since the city's owned it?
I think, didn't they buy it in 2015?
Sorry, that's my mother.
2015?
It was back when Troy was on council.
2015, 2014, yeah.
I mean, how do you guys feel?
What was the gas bill this month, like, a hundred and...
A hundred bucks, a hundred even.
Yeah.
I mean, it's quite a bit of money, if you add up all the utilities throughout the year.
I agree, I agree. I, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem turning it off.
So that's what council wants to do, is go ahead and just turn the, turn it off, and do you want to hire someone to go ahead and take care of that, winterize it?
Yeah, I'd like to move to hire the local plumbing company to go in there and winterize it.
Fine, me. I can't, you know, I can't vote on that.
I don't know that you need a motion to do it, do we?
Just consensus? Would we just need a consensus, John?
In it, within your spending?
I'm sure. If it's over, then I'll have a talk with the local plumbing company.
Yeah, I think you can just direct them to figure out that.
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead.
Because I don't really know if anything else, it'll be affected, if the heat was turned off, you know, and... It doesn't get used for anything right now, I mean, the, there's nothing in there.
Let's go ahead and get that taken care of, Jamie, if you would, please.
I would love to.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
Two more.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries, three o. All right, moving on. Department head committee reports. Grant administrator, Lisa Cornwell, she is not here. Do we have any word from Lisa? Nothing.
Did you, did you get hold of her at all, as far as the, the line's painted over there, if she got any more news on that, for the school?
I haven't heard from her for several weeks. I've still on everything.
You didn't reach out to her?
Fresh 24, fresh 21, I'll be back out at station, tech will be available.
Questions or anything that we can direct to Lisa? Okay, moving on, police chief? We have nothing. Okay, underneath, we have a position open.
Do we have a position open?
Well, it's, underneath, it's on the agenda, sir.
Oh, uh, well, so one thing I'll, just, we had kind of talked about bringing it up to the council was, uh, for the council members who don't know, possibly maybe losing our patrolman, um, after I get back this summer. Just family reasons, um, won't be able to do it. So bringing it up to the council to see if we can not advertise for an opening, but open up for applications so that we have some time. If everything works out and all of a sudden he can stay, then, then great, you know, that's the route we're going to always take, is to keep him. But if he doesn't, at least that gives us a little bit of time, instead of when I come back, then all of a sudden, we're, we're going to be down one officer, and then we're just starting to try and get applications in, and we can just keep them on file. Uh, you know, we can just open it up for an applications to keep on file, and that way we can look, uh, down the line, and we just kind of set ourselves up so that we're not behind the eight ball again of, now we're down to two, and then we're just starting the process, so... That's all I'd ask the council, their permission to, uh, to be able to post that that way, and just start file. We have had a couple, I have had a couple people call in for part-time position, uh, send applications out, haven't gotten anything back. So we're just going to kind of wait and see, and, uh, one of them seems really good, if I can get that one in here as a part-time, that'd be really great. But, yeah, that was just pretty much what I wanted to ask council, was to be able to have permission to put that on website and open it up, because I can't send anything out, except for part-time, because that's our only open position, so, that's all I'm asking.
Well, I'm fine with that, before, and I think that's a good idea.
Council's okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, let's go ahead and take care of that, please. All right, anything else, chief?
No, no.
All right, how's everything going?
It's, uh, going really well, um, got it, I gave, so I started, I put in a packet, uh, and we're going to do it each month of the, the first council meeting. We're going to try the first council meeting, but at least at one of the council meetings per month, uh, you'll have a letter in there from the P.D. Just stuff that doesn't need to be covered in the council meeting, it's just information, uh, so that we have an open door, basically, and it lets you guys know what we're doing, what training guys have been to, uh, what training maybe people are getting ready to go to, and just kind of in general of what it is that we're doing. Um, activities, anything in the schools, just stuff like that, so that if people come up to you and, and, you know, you guys are, at least have a heads up to knowing what we're doing, and I just want to open up that line of communication, so that you guys will always know, uh, you know, what it is the police department's doing in the community, and what we're doing as a department. Uh, we did start the interwatch the first of the month, that was a great thing, um, it's already shown beneficial. It's just an informational thing in our department on the computer, that we can, uh, we can communicate, since we do have that gap between on-call time and an officer, uh, we don't have that face-to-face, um, often, so that kind of helps to bridge that of what they had throughout their shift. If it wasn't report-worthy, uh, they're able to, um, put it on our computer, and then next shift can go in there and read it five hours later and say, hey, okay, I might have to deal with this problem, or this was an issue, so that's, uh, that's already worked to our benefit, and it's only been the second day of, of having that, so it's really been successful, so. But other than that, guys are great, uh, department, I'm excited. Again, thanks for this opportunity, um, really enjoying it, and, uh, tired, worn out, uh, it's been a long two weeks, um...
That was in the fine print.
Very fine print, um, but, yeah, again, you know, thanks to the council for allowing me to, uh, to take the chief's position, uh, I'm enjoying it, and, and we're turning some things around, and we're going to get the department, uh, you know, back to where it's proud of itself, and the city's proud of itself, and the council's proud of it, so...
Good.
Yeah, anything we can do, then just let us know.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, where we going? Fire chief, not here.
Out of fire.
Huh? He's out of fire. Okay, next, uh, Jamie. What you got?
Oh, I've seen that look.
Yeah.
Nothing.
You've got nothing? Ow, somebody called the weather report, let's see if someplace froze over. Okay, moving on, Jeff Williamson is not here. We do have a couple of things that we need to talk about, that's later in the agenda. Where we going, city attorney?
The email that I sent in reference to the land bank, uh, cleared up a little bit of some of the issues I talked about at the last meeting regarding the city's kind of ability or authority to just go to council and, or go to commissioners and say, remove a piece of property from a tax sale, and we will, we will buy it. At, at least without, the city would have to have at least put in there, uh, the tax, what's owed on the, on the property as far as the taxes. But one of the suggestions that I talked to, and I already sent a letter on to Jamie, um, I guess I didn't make changes to that letter, would be if council would want to send a letter to specific landowners and ask them to donate their property to the land bank, um, and in doing so, when it comes to the land bank, it then becomes wiped clean, so to speak, of, uh, of the taxes, and I, and, and most assessments, I'd have to look to see what kind of assessments, I'm assuming there's no sewer assessments or specific district assessments on those properties, but would wipe clean those properties, so that the land bank would then owe them tax-free. There is a benefit, a federal tax benefit, for them, donating those properties, and that would depend on the value of the property, and then on, they would have to work with their accountant to do something like that. The only issue is title, this, the land bank would want to receive those, that property with a clean title, which means the council would probably want me to look at the property, look at the, the, um, the records, to see whether, um, title can be transferred to the land, land bank free and clear. Where we run into issues on that is if somebody has died and they didn't probate a will, and so no heirs have been determined. There's not much I can do in that kind of situation. I think we ran into the, into that with another piece of property at one point in the past. Sometimes those houses just get abandoned, which is why they may end up in the tax sale.
Can we, can we get title insurance or anything on them?
You, you could, but the title insurance company is going to require that a death certificate gets filed, if it's spelled joint tenancy, or it's going to require, uh, a probate proceeding, or it's going to make an exception to the title insurance, so you, you take it subject to that, I guess.
It just seems like a hassle, don't it?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, you, you could kind of direct me to specific properties, I can check those out, to see whether they would be a hassle, and I can tell real quick, you know, we, we can see if somebody's still alive, the last person, uh, of record is still alive. If they're not alive, then I'll know right away whether there's an issue or not. I mean, I'm trying to sell a piece of farm ground right now, for a client, in which there's like 13 heirs, and two of them are died, and it's, it's becoming a hassle for me to clear up those.
Wow.
The other option is just to bid on it at the tax sale, I mean, if they start them at 30 bucks, the city's going to have some buying power, I would think, if it is $10,000 in, in that budget, it may be worth spending a little bit of money.
Cheaper to pay a little bit more for the property then, than pay you to work on it?
Could be, right, no, I'm serious, it could be. You just, you're eliminating having to bid against somebody if, if you get the property done.
Right, right, yeah.
And I don't, it worked once or twice?
Well, I don't know, from, there's been, I think, two properties in there, as far as I'm aware of, but the one was before I was here, and then the one on Second Street, we got donated.
Wasn't that like Texas or San Antonio, or, or Mexico or someplace?
I still need to send that lady, I don't really know what to send her, I guess, we don't really have like a, this is the land bank, this is the process, like, I mean, we have the...
Oh, but didn't we, didn't we, somebody donate a property a couple of years ago? I remember there was a, I messed up the legal description, we had to get the deed signed twice.
It, yeah, the Second Street, she wanted us to turn it into a park or something. Yeah, it was the house on Second.
It was torn down.
No, the fire department used to do this.
Okay, is that it, John?
That's it. I mean, I don't know when the tax sale is, I haven't received a petition.
I haven't heard anything about it, so I'm not sure when.
I suppose I heard either.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, all right, anybody have any questions for John? All right, moving on, this is me. Um, first off, let me just say, um, I would like to thank Dakota Tucker for serving his community, um, in the fine job he did while he was here as mayor. This isn't a, a position that, um, I expected to be in, regardless, I'm here, and I promised the city of St. John and the community that I'll do the best that I can to represent everyone here. Having said that, I'd like to recommend Joanna McAllister as my replacement. Although Joanna is new to the community, she has worked for USD 350 for the past, uh, three years, and is very active in extracurricular activities at school. Joanna brings a strong willingness to serve her community, and unbiased opinion, and a fresh viewpoint to council, so... That's who I'm recommending at this time.
I don't know her, do you?
I can't say that.
I do, she is advisor at the school, and she teaches English at the school.
Yeah, I mean, just, what do you think about her? It's hard for me to vote on something like that, because I don't know her.
Right. Yeah, I, I really don't know her that well. I, I mean, I think that it'd be pretty hard for someone that just moved to town within the last month or so, um, to step into a position like this, um, that you don't know. Sometimes you need to know background.
Well, she, like I said, she's been heavily, um, involved in a lot of things going on here in school. She's worked here for USD 350 for the past three years, she's been quite involved in anything, a lot of things that's going on around town. Uh, she knows quite a few people here in town, um, not everybody, but a lot of people do know her. Again, that's my recommendation.
I have had a young man approach me, Ross Fisher's approached me, who has a family in town. His wife is a dental hygienist, they have a business in town, they employ a lot of people. He's well-educated, he's outspoken, he can run numbers. He would be my choice over this person, and I know both of them. Uh, I think he's spoken to other members on the council, and he would be by, by far my choice. I would not vote for the person he recommended, I can tell you that.
He reached out to me, did he get...
I, I talked to him, yeah.
I mean, he, I, he told me he was looking at running this next, next election anyways. I think he'd be good. I, I really don't know this lady you're talking about. I mean, it's hard for me to vote for somebody I don't...
Yeah, I understand that, that's reasonable.
Like Jim points out, I mean, Ross is a businessman, I, I like his morals from what I know of him.
Again, I just made the, I just made a recommendation, it's your decision on council.
That's fine, so, it's fine, I, you know, like, like Jim said, he's, he's young, he's got a family here, he's committed to staying here, and...
He's a goat anywhere.
You know, he's outspoken, um, I think he'd be a good fit, he's, uh, he's around town every day, drives around all hours of the day. He's always here, he sees stuff, you know, it's, I think that's a, that's a good benefit of someone on the city council, um, being out in the general public.
Virtually guarantee that he will not agree with us?
Well, forgive me, I didn't catch the full name on it.
Ross Fisher.
Ross Fisher, thank you.
That's part of the job, Bill, right?
Yeah, that's part of the job, he will, he will not be agreeable.
Okay, well, if that's what council wants, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, so you're now recommending Ross Fisher?
Yeah, I, because that's what I need to do, okay?
All right, that's kind of the process.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Vote's three o. Ross Fisher will take my place, and serve out the remainder of my term, which ends in 2021, so...
Appreciate it, Mark.
No, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Moving on, land bank, do we need to recess into land bank at, at this time?
We don't have a president.
Who's the VP?
You're the treasurer.
Marshall's in charge.
Just so you know.
Great, I'm, I'm not for sure, but I, I think I just heard Marshall come in the fire station, uh, on radio, so I mean, I don't know if he can leave it till the end or something, or...
Yes, do we need to discuss?
We need to, I don't... Is there anything in the land bank that we need to discuss?
Yeah, that's my question.
We didn't get anywhere with this. We didn't get anywhere.
I felt, I felt it was appropriate to discuss them to me, because I sent that to council, and not the members of land bank, though it's one and the same. And, and candidly, I did not read ahead to see that there was a special land bank. But, uh, if, if the council wants to revisit and, and go back in, or go in the land bank later on, when Marshall gets here, it'd be good.
I think it'd be a good idea, because we didn't get anywhere.
Yeah, oh, yeah, why don't we just move that to the end? Okay, moving on, old business, uh, fuel purchasing.
That was for me, um, you guys had talked about, um, using both entities, I guess, available for gas, and you say you wanted me to reach out to the school, and I spoke with Josh. The school is not, they haven't moved forward with being able to purchase at both locations. While they are using both locations, they've just been using, like, the credit cards or whatever form of payment that they, they proceed with. The way that that would work is basically, under my impression, is to apply for, like, a Phillips 66 card. Like, they don't have a White's Foodliner gas card, so it would be to apply for, like, a Phillips 66, not, so it's not the same, or is the same, I don't...
It'd basically be a credit card?
I think so. I don't know how the Kansas card works, or like, other than what we have here, I don't do it.
Gives you two cents off posted price, and if you're a member of the COOP, you get a dividend on fuel purchases, which, as much fuel as the city purchases, a dividend, if we became, became co-op members, I think would be sizable, and I think it would be buying fuel... and I think it would be buying fuel at White's, at the posted price, I mean, two cents a gallon heads up.
I, yeah, I, I agree with you, Jim, but the only, the only other thing I, I see is, you know, they, they have moved to town, we need to also support both businesses in town, I, you know, they buy an abundance of electricity, water, you know, I, it does add up, 'cause I think, like you talked about, I mean, it could be up to fifteen cents a gallon, you know, some years, that they refund you.
That White will.
No, um, yeah.
Kansas COOP, I mean, it does add up.
It does, but...
Yeah, I, I like the idea of supporting him, though.
Yeah.
'Cause if, if you put, put it in this way, uh, out of the two gas stations, they are priced the same, but COOP's selling a lot more because they get trucks in there. Truckers in there.
They sell diesel fuel to trucks, yeah.
Yeah, truckers, and you can't put truckers in it, I just, I'd like to help the other business out, I just, when I got on here, all was about being business friendly, and I'd like to support them.
That probably outweighs more than anything, I guess, to me, to support both businesses in town.
Oh my God, I've just stated my view.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's something you have to look at, too.
I buy fuel where, I, I buy things where I get the best value.
And that's probably, probably should have looked into that one, about all that diesel fuel, you know, but we didn't have a price for them, you know.
So, I mean, I, it's one of those things, you have to have a consensus to go forth and get that credit card.
I wonder if that Phillips sixty-six card is, is just something that you can purchase fuel through, I mean...
Some of their cards will have, I thought White's was going to have a similar program as Dillon's where you bought so many...
Fuel points?
You get fuel points, but I...
I, I don't have a problem with the credit card, I mean, as long as it's one of those where if you pay it on time, they don't charge you the twenty-one percent.
Right.
Just that's the other thing, if they can get it free of charge, a credit card, where you pay it on time, they don't charge you, I'd like something like that.
Have you reached out to White's at all, Jamie, or, okay?
No, I just spoke with Josh, 'cause he said that, that was the only option, but he didn't know if they were gonna have...
I would maybe get some more specifics on what that Phillips sixty-six card does, I mean, if it's basic, yeah, just look into it a little bit more.
Well, if you get, you know, you discover some of those, they'll all pay, pay so much cash back if you use their card, so, almost all of the cards.
I don't do credit cards, so I'm not the, the go-to on that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the idea of checking into different companies, I guess, would be a good idea.
Yeah, the General Motors card, I don't know, I guess mine's the one, mine's the one that pays it through, it's, uh, points for buying a new vehicle.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so is, uh, 'cause the council's okay with Jamie Glenn and checking in on that and looking a little bit more into some information?
I don't care if we buy fuel both places, and I, I know that, that, from what I perceive, the value is greater for me buying it at the COOP.
Yeah, I can see that, yeah.
Good, we'll have to check into this, if you want, Jamie, thank you. Okay, moving on, memorandum from attorney regarding division of duties and responsibilities, John?
The only thing I can say is, do you have any questions? What questions do you not have?
Do you have a recommendation?
Uh, I think I said in email or said to Mark that I don't wanna...
If you keep the city clerk happy, everyone's happy.
Yeah, well, um, the last thing you wanna do is go through the process of, of quote-unquote changing the form of government, but you don't have to if you simply kind of do that city administrator, uh, which we've done like, well, you can do all of it by charter ordinance, but that at least doesn't change the council and the, um, mayor's duties. You're gonna kind of treat her like a baseball manager, you guys are gonna, are gonna do the hiring and the firing, but then she's gotta do the managing responsibilities.
That's you putting it as administrative?
You mean, you could call it anything you want, but most people would call it city administrator, be, only because a city manager has a specific statutory type of government, but you could, you could call, continue to call her city clerk, um, where you can, so that things kind of flow, it's better, you could reenter the position as a city administrator.
Now, if I read your correctly, she would no longer be able to do the court, though.
You guys would have to continue to hire the judge, it would be awkward if the court clerk had a, uh, higher, uh, ranking, so to speak, as the, as the court, the, the judge, right? It should be the other way around, it's the judge's court. The judge is supposed to be the one that dictates how she manages her docket, and whether people get called up, and, you know, that kind of thing, and you don't want the judges, judge to be, have an oversight, um, and the person that she's supposed to be having oversight of.
So how do you manage that?
It, it would just, well, if, if you could do the city administrator position, and the mayor and council continue their position of, of hiring and, and deciding on raises and that kind of thing, it, it wouldn't be a problem. You guys would just have to continue hiring the judge.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was my only issue, is if you went to like a city management type position, you would almost have to have Pam or somebody else act as the court clerk.
Mark, on as far as like, uh, you having the time, you know, as to your mayor duties to answer, if, when she calls, the chief calls, we were having issues before with previous mayor with calling back or answering, where, where these guys can't do their job anymore, I mean, are you, how do you feel? I mean, when you got thrown into this spot, and then your responsibilities are that, is that something that you think you can still handle?
Yeah, um, and I, I understand council's concerns in regards to my position over at the school. I have, I'm, I'm going to answer as many calls as I need to in this position. Um, I'm going to do my job as mayor, I've already spoken with the superintendent, the principal, and my lead teacher, and I let them know that I do have responsibilities here as the mayor, and that there are going to be times that I'm going to need to step out, and I'm going to need to take care of business here. Unless that changes, I don't see any problem with my participation as the mayor. I'm going to do everything I can, today, when Jeff had, um, told, called to let me know that he was not going to be here, um, he didn't know where I was at, he called me, so I, and it's a library, I had no idea what it was about. Well, I ran over there as quickly as I could, I thought it was something, something that was damaged at the library that I needed to know about. Well, it wasn't, it was just that he was ill, but I took care of it, I just stepped away from my job, I had no student at the time, and I just went over and took care of it, um, all he did was just needed to go home, so, but I will be available for the community, and if Jamie, um, the chief, or Jeff need me, I'll be here.
How are you guys feeling about it? I just, I think before our decision's made, I wanna amend the agenda to discuss my executive session for employee performance before making a decision on that. If you guys are looking at making a decision, if not, put it down there.
Well, as I wanna make a decision tonight. I mean, I think there's some things that we could do to make it easier on us sitting here on a Wednesday night by giving her some more power, but not necessarily taking all of it from Mark either. You know, as far as giving her, uh, approval above and beyond of what, you know, like the fuel deal last time, we, we discussed it, Jeff needing to buy a whole transport load, it's something we have to have. If it's in the budget and he's done his homework and got his bids, and we're going with the cheapest place, I don't see why we need to be approving that stuff. I mean, when the old chief come in and wanted us to approve eighty-five dollars over his budget so that he could buy everything at one time, I mean, that stuff's just, if you ask me, that's ridiculous, that we have to do it on a Wednesday night, they have to wait two weeks to have something approved.
Okay, well, I agree with that, but why don't we go ahead and figure that out tonight, then? Why, I mean, why hold it?
Well, I just think there's a lot of figuring to do, I mean, I think a person needs to make lists and let them two look at them, let everybody else look at them before we go throwing stuff in place, I don't think it's something we just throw together and go with.
If you're, if you're going to put more on Jamie, I think you're going to have to probably raise her salary.
Oh, yeah, we, we can discuss that.
You know, so there's some financial cost, but there also might be financial savings, but, you know, it's...
Wow, I just don't see why we can't figure it out tonight, we always just push things and push things and push things off, guys.
Right? Well, I mean, Jamie, is that something you feel comfortable?
I would really enjoy the flow of the regular workday to go these years.
I mean, it, it sounds like to me, it's just, you know, no matter who's in the mayor position, it's, it's hard to be here all the time. Jamie has to call you, you run down here, you know, it, it should be that our city employees should be able to take care of it, and if they have any major questions, you know, we put, put enough trust in them, they should, you know, leave it to council meetings to, to ask on a, on a big decision, and... I guess I would like to see more, um, stipulate, or I guess, what...
Let's figure it out.
Which, um, what she would be responsible for, and that, and that was...
You know what I'd like to see you do, Jamie, is I'd like to see you write down what your duties are, and maybe how you'd like this tree to be underneath you and set it down and present it to the next council meeting, and I, I, and so we'd see what it is, and then present us with what you think your workload's going to increase, and then we need to evaluate for what you think you would need in compensation for doing these extra duties.
Over it, go ahead.
So it might be helpful also for council to have an idea of, of what issues come up that require you to, or why you feel like you need to call me, or call, had to call Dakota, or, or Mark. What, what issues come up on a daily, monthly basis?
Well, and that's the thing, is a lot of this stuff is, I already do it, you know? A good example, I feel like, is, you know, and I'm under the, I'm still trying to figure out what you guys are doing here, but I'm under the understanding that you'll still do the hiring and firing, but then I would have the authority of, like, the full authority, I guess, of HR. So I wouldn't have to go pulling teeth to try to get evaluations done, and say someone does something they're not supposed to, and like write, you know, get the actual forms, write-ups, meet with the department heads, this happened, you know, just have the flow of everything instead of waiting for, you know, the evaluations, I think I've been screaming about for two years now, and we're still behind, so, it's just things like that, that just the flow of everything, I mean, it's, it's harder to say, oh, I'll be doing this, this, and this, because it's really, I already do it. I mean, everything really are, I mean, if, if we're doing the way things, if we're doing, if we're doing work the way that we're supposed to be doing it, we take care of the daily operations. So, I'm, I'm doing it. The headaches come when I have no authority to make those decisions and have to wait, or we can't get anything figured out.
You can give her expanded budget authority, then also, you know, more so than you do for the departments. And I'm not sure where that's the area now.
I guess...
The budget?
Or the, the spending authority?
In minutes?
I mean, it's what, two thousand dollars?
No, thousand.
Jeff says two thousand, and then Chief and I are one thousand.
Let's see, that's the same way every time we buy salt for the treatment facility, we have to approve it. It's not like we're not gonna buy it, but, you know, it's over everybody's spending.
Sure, and, you know, and one, one way you could do that's kind of handled in some counties or, or cities is, is Jamie then could be tasked with providing a, just a report that goes out with the agenda that says, these are the purchases, I mean, you guys see it, but these, this is what I approved, and, and
Right.
These are decisions, this is the person I, I evaluated this last week, and, and then she could just come to council with recommendations, saying this is what I wanna do, this is...
And I, I would assume that you got, like, I would have to have the report, and we're still working on the one report that you guys will get, I don't know if we'll have it ready by the next council meeting, but some of those new reports for your guys' approval, especially with only having two in here, like, you know, that report is probably something that you guys would just sign off on, that you agree that this is being taken out of, and you guys are following everything, just for the checks and balances and everything.
So what does council think?
Well, I think someplace you're going to have to have a written directive to be, to be the administrator, and so that's why I'm saying table it for this week, write, write things down, think about, so we have time to have a paragraph of authority for you, and think about things that you're going to have issues with, and I think most of them will be HR, and if I, I think we've got more of a cohesive working group than we've had in a long time, so you'll have less of them, but I think you need to think about when we did not have a cohesive working group, and how that could have been better handled. And I think giving you that authority, administrative authority would be a godsend to all of us, and Mark, and, and Mark, you need to have some input as to, you know, what, what you wanna, if you have a problem giving this up.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with giving anything up.
As long as, as long as the job gets done.
I just want the job done.
Yeah, that's, that's why I do it.
That's all I want, and it's nothing personal against you, it just sounds like to me it may flow better, and it may be easier on, easier...
The only, the only thing that I see is if we gave Jamie a little bit more budget authority to take care of things, like you've said, the gas, for instance, you know, you've used that as an example, um, does it, we, we're going to need it. Do we have to wait two weeks?
Right.
For council? I mean, if they need it right then and there, if she has the authority, we wouldn't have to worry about it, and like John had suggested, we could get a list every meeting that says what exactly was approved, if we have any questions, then that's the time to deal with it.
I remember discussions about these cabinets that seemed to take forever.
Oh, yeah. Um, my suggestion is, let's, uh, table this, uh, for next meeting, um, let's, everyone get a wish list, Jamie, let's, uh, talk about some of the things, maybe tomorrow, or the day after, whenever, when we can get a list together on what, uh, how you, what you feel comfortable with, and then we'll bring it to council, is that okay?
We will figure something out the next meeting.
Yeah, well, let's, let's try and figure something out, let's have a, like Jim said, let's have a list of things to do.
I'm just putting it out there, I feel like we do like a shitty job of pushing things off, and pushing things off, and pushing things off.
Okay, but I think that, you know, this is, but this is gonna go back and forth, so, I wanna make sure I'm understanding and hearing correctly. You guys want, are looking at giving more authority to my position, so the flow of the office, the flow of the city, the flow of the daily work can be done better. But you guys will still be doing the hiring and firing, you guys will still...
We'll still approve that, yes.
You guys will still be, you guys will still be over all of the department heads, or does that put me? Like, those are the things I think that you guys...
We're still gonna be up here at the top.
Oh, I wanted to be up there.
You're gonna be below us.
Okay, but I'm just saying, like, is, is that the point where you want me? Like, in the HR position, are you gonna want me to do Alan's evaluation, are you gonna want me to do Jeff's evaluation? Like, those are the things...
I think between you and the mayor, I mean, the two of you could do it.
Well, it's one or the other, dude.
And not only that, but you guys...
Look, it, it's, in my opinion, you asked for me to be open and blunt about it, so I will. It's my responsibility to evaluate the chief,
Yeah.
Jamie, and Jeff, and that's what I intend to be doing, it's up to you.
If she's, if she's doing the daily stuff, some input from her would help you, that's why I said both of you, I mean, you could do the evaluation with input from her, yeah, I don't have an issue with you doing evaluations.
So, what's your, he put his on there. What do you want from Jamie? Let's be clear here.
Well, I don't know, I just see, Jamie is here most every day, um, employed... Well, I don't know, I just see it's, Jamie is here most every day, employed by the city, at a full-time job. And she sees a lot, works a lot, everybody here, and I think maybe she should just do the evaluations, I mean, I, for sure be on it, be in on them, you know, if she's gonna be the minister here. If not, just do them, you know, I I don't see a problem with that.
I like her having controlled evaluations because she's here all day, every day, and gets to see what these guys are doing, hears them in the radio, and I think she's got a good eye on them, maybe a little better than I do.
She gets a general public coming in here.
Mark, it's not that taking all your powers away, it's, it might seem like it, but.
I mean, Mark would still have to make sure that Jamie's doing her job, and when, when Jeff isn't doing his job.
But someone still has to evaluate her.
Right, I mean, you think about it, for those who own businesses, and I'm the same way, when I'm gone, all of a sudden, I notice that phone calls stop being answered after 4:30, you know, 'cause I get a report, and so my employees don't seem to work as hard. I'm watching this, when I'm not there supervising. And if, if the person that's in charge supervising, I mean, it's just a natural tendency to kind of slow down or take your time or wanna put things off when there's not somebody who's paying as close attention. And I have no idea, again, what Jamie would have had to call Dakota on, but I know in the past that there are, have been instances where the mayor's been needed and the mayor's just not as easy to find as a decision needs to be made. And then they're scrambling, looking through the, the code book to see whether they've got certain authority to go ahead and do something.
Or calling John and getting charged extra money to figure it out.
Damn, have you seen his belt? Look at the suits he can afford.
I think if you're gonna be the administrator, you probably need to be the administrator over everyone else, the police and the city manager. That's what I think, is if you're going to be there, that's going to have to be your responsibility. But do you, do you feel comf- do you two feel comfortable with Mark giving, losing some territory, you gaining more, I mean, I think this, that's.
I'm okay with it with the understanding that we still have a chief of police that does his job, because I'm not the chief of police.
Right.
And a city superintendent that does his job, because I'm not the city superintendent, and I'm not gonna pretend to know what they do.
I like the way you put that.
Well, and that's right, though.
Yeah, but I like the, the, put it as an administrative period, because if we start arguing through all this crap of, this is what mayor does, this is what she does, and then we get lost somewhere in the middle and there's an argument, I don't like that, it's, we're either all the way over here, or all the way over here.
Plus, you guys have to do something, you're, I don't know how this stuff was written, but your code is not in the kind of order.
I like the, I like the deal of the administrative job on it, you know, it's a bad deal for you, Mark, and that's why you're being blunt about it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get something straight, okay? I'm new to this position, obviously, right? I'm not gonna miss any authority that you take away, to be honest, it's not like I had a heck of a lot to begin with, all right? All I want to do is just make sure that our city is well taken care of, that's it.
It's not like you're pushing them away.
Yeah, and if that means that we need to give Jamie a little bit more authority to do her job, to make things run smoothly in here, and with every other department, when they need something, then I say, let's go ahead and do it. Let's come up with a list, let's talk about it, bring it up next meeting, and then we'll make a final decision. I agree with you, Si, that we cannot let these type of things continue to roll on, it is counterproductive, so.
And, and come up with what? You think you need compensation?
You don't do that, Jamie, you don't put it on that plate.
Okay.
I think we're all fair enough people.
So, somebody.
Hey, watch it.
What's that?
Yeah, you still get paid the same.
I get paid?
You know.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna have to decide what we're going to be in compensation, so, well, figure it out.
You also have to keep in mind, you're, you're giving her an opportunity to increase her skills and make herself more marketable.
Okay. All right.
I'm already marketable.
It would make her a lot more marketable, wouldn't it?
Okay, with that being said, let's, uh, if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and move on. Uh, new business, lift station.
I'll talk about that for Jeff.
Okay.
I don't know a ton about it, but I do know that we're having issues, I'm sure he's talked to you guys about it. And I really want to stress that we need to be thinking about it.
I think we're gonna have to replace it.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to replace that pump down at the lift station over by Cherry Lane.
Oh, yeah.
He was supposed to get a quote and all of that for tonight, and I didn't hear anything more about it, but not only that, I think the sewer truck's been out all week. I don't know, I've tried to bring it up to him about, um, like, maintenance schedules, I don't know if and when we've been doing any of that. I don't, like, the sewer-
Works routine maintenance of-
Yeah.
Of the sewer system and like water lines and stuff like that, but, I mean, sewer especially, and I've been having a lot of phone calls about our water, like smelling of chlorine, so I just feel like some, some of those routine maintenance things-
Three million dollar treatment.
Maybe not be getting done, and I think that we need to look at making sure that those are getting done. Because these issues, I mean, not saying that it caused this, but, I mean, if we're gonna spend however much money to replace this, we need, we need to look at doing routine maintenance and making sure that we're gonna be able to make it last.
You've been having calls in the office, haven't you, complaints? There's another complaint. So as far as the lift station, Jeff talked to you or what?
Well, we got paged out there to Cherry Lane the other morning because somebody thought they snuck gas, but it was sewer gas. And the lift station quit again on them, which is the same one that had been, they've been having issues with it for quite a while.
There's two pumps, from what I understand, there's two pumps there, the first one's been, it has been down for quite a while now.
Right.
And then the second one failed, so that's why, that's why we're in a big hurry now.
I think it's expensive.
I think it's like $25,000.
$25 or $30,000.
For rebuilt.
For a rebuilt unit.
So I just wanted, I know he's not here to discuss it with you guys, but I wanted you to have it in your mind.
It'd be a drop-in deal, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
Okay then.
I mean, I just asked that he gets several quotes on it.
There aren't a whole lot of people that deal with them.
Yeah, it was like a rebuilt thing that.
I mean, you can buy brand-new ones.
I just, I'd just like to see several bids, I don't care if they're rebuilt or new, whatever, it's just if you can ask that of them.
Any other discussion? All right, moving on, uh, accept resignation of-
Oh, registration.
Yeah. Of Cody Hoy.
I'd make a motion to accept Cody Hoy's resignation. Resignation.
I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries four up. Okay, next on the list, uh, bus parking for school.
So, when I talked to Drouche about the fuel, he wanted to put it in my ear that they are going to be looking at a place to park the buses, because the county is not going to be allowing them, I believe, to park out there. I told him I would let you guys know off the top of my head, not that I'm the brilliant one, but I assume they need electricity, we don't really have a lot with electricity, you know, Mark and I kind of discussed down by the power plant, but we are gonna be having this, the container, I just.
If you go straight south of the power plant, they'll never get in and out of there.
Right.
You'll have to haul rock in there like no other.
Yeah, Josh contacted me also and tried to look at the places around town, um, you know, I don't know. I, I know they do have the lot east of the library, I know they like, you know, when they have big events at the library, parking vehicles in there. I, I kind of wondered, um, if maybe they'd have some more parking on the street once the one-way is, if it does go through. I, I forget how that was drawn up, but there may be more angled parking there, maybe they could, I don't know, would they park six buses or so every night?
I think, I think it's about six.
I don't, I didn't even ask how many, I guess, I should have.
You know, there is electricity there, regardless of where they put them, they're gonna have to, you know, rent electricity to plug the buses in.
That area right across from the, uh, the library would probably be ideal, you know, providing that we have parking for other events that happen at the library. And what you're talking about with the angled parking, I'm not sure exactly how many spaces are supposed to be, but it looks like, the last time we looked at some type of drawing, it looked like there was quite a few, but I don't, I don't recall. Yeah.
Well, I don't have a problem, I think that if you could spot the library, and if, if we work for them, I mean, it is our, our kids, our community, if we helped them just bring the lap, the lapole down, and then they take care of hiring somebody to put the outlets in, I'm okay with that, but I guess right for right now, you just put a bug in your ear, there's no decision you can make.
I was kind of thinking, you know, if the houses are gonna come up on sheriff's sale, but.
Well, they have the lots right by Garner's too, I mean, if that's-
That's true.
I don't know.
You kind of, I mean, I'm sure they wanna keep those buses in somewhere that's fairly secure, like, not just in the far south end of town where nobody heard the drive-by, you know, but.
Is there a reason that they're losing their parking?
That's all gonna become storage, storage sheds being built out there.
Okay, interesting. All right, any more discussion on that? All right, moving on, cereal malt beverage license for Jubilee.
So, the Jubilee Committee's gonna do the beer garden this year, and I need approval to go ahead and get that license, I guess.
It's no longer C and B, what's it called?
Enhanced Real Beer.
The insurance is good on all that?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion then to approve the enhanced cereal malt beverage license for Jubilee weekend.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda, sewer pond bids.
Can I put the bid out for the sewer ponds again this year?
Yep.
Okay. Do I need a motion for that?
No, that's probably one of those things that you probably want authority in this meeting.
Well, I was gonna just do it, but I didn't want to-
Do you want to pick the three executive sessions, or you want to do?
We can do it very last.
Very last, okay.
Okay, no more discussion, I have an executive session to discuss, excuse me, to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to the non-elected personnel matter exception. Can I get a motion and a second?
Is, is it the first one or the?
Yeah, the first one, I'm sorry. With Jeff, yeah.
Jeff's not here.
Yeah.
You, you got it, don't you?
Okay, yeah.
To include, I guess?
Uh, to include, uh, council, uh, city clerk, and attorney, and mayor.
So moved. For how long?
Well, let's make it about, let's make it five minutes?
Yeah.
Five minutes, okay, we're making a five-minute executive session, I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries for all, we will resume at 8:09. Examining. All those meeting back to order, have another executive session to discuss individual employee's performance percent to the non-elected personnel matter exception. Chief, how much time do you need?
Oh, same amount of time.
About five minutes, okay, we will adjourn, uh, and meet back here at, uh, let's see.
To include, sorry.
Oh, sorry, all right, well, to include, uh, council, chief, city attorney and clerk and mayor. Uh, we will resume at, um, at 16 after. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We'll have a motion and a second, all in favor? Votes have it. Back to order.
I would make a motion that we give Sergeant Elliott a 3% raise from $18 to $18.54.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four up.
Did you move or did you second?
I fell asleep when I did.
Okay, uh, let's see, we have one last one here, do you have, this is one you, you're gonna be doing this one? The last one right here, Jeff.
I added one after that.
Oh. Well, yeah, I've got you here, but this one right here, wait, are you taking care of this?
I can.
Okay, if you would, please, I have an executive session, uh, for possible hire, non-elected personnel, um, how many minutes do we need?
Seven.
Okay.
To include?
To include everyone.
Except that guy.
Except me. Okay, uh, I have a motion and a second.
Reconvene.
And we will reconvene at 8:25. All those in favor? Motion carries four up. Do we need to go back into the executive session?
Yeah.
I would recommend to go back in the executive session for two minutes.
Two minutes.
Same thing, same people.
Okay.
Same show.
Okay, going to back into executive session to re, uh, resume at, uh, 28 after, uh, all those in favor? Vote carries four up. Resume council meeting, haven't taken action at this time, does council have, uh, anything right now?
I'd make a motion to hire David Graves at $13 an hour contingent to his acceptance.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four up. All right. Now, final executive session here, um, for 10 minutes.
No, we'll make it, that's mine, right?
Yeah, this is yours.
We'll make it five.
Five minutes, okay. To include?
Attorney, mayor, council, and clerk.
Okay.
This is non-elected personnel.
Yeah.
Non-elected personnel, okay, we will resume at, uh, 8:31. Do I, have a, all those in favor? Vote carries four up. Ask at this time, we have another executive session for-
Just do another five minutes?
For another five minutes, uh, to include, um, council, attorney, city clerk, uh, we will resume at, uh, 37 after. All those in favor?
Is that, wait, the mayor just made a motion, you can't make a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion.
No.
Wait, no, all those in favor? Motion carries four up. Council meeting back to order. Entertainer motion to go into land bank meeting.
Do we have to have a motion?
Yeah, 'cause you adjourned out of the city.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries four up. Turn this meeting to council meeting, go into land bank.
If, if council wants to talk specifics about specific properties and specific prices, then that can be done in executive session related to the preliminary discussion related to acquisition of a property.
Good.
If it's gonna be general discussion about, yeah, we should do this and
Or not do it.
Or not do it, or what we're gonna do with it, then that needs to happen in open discussion now.
So what did you find out about the property?
Well, you are here, I'm disgusted.
You're a Jaku, man.
I think, I think the general consensus of the council is that it's probably cheaper to go ahead and, and bid at auction than to play these games as far as, uh, whether we send letters out to owners and try to get them to donate the property, A, because the, the city's gonna have to pay somebody the title work. If it goes through tax, hell, you're gonna get a share style.
Right.
What, what's the problem with them purchasing it?
Well, that was my other thought.
They, why can't they purchase it?
If it's a county agency, why isn't?
Because they, they're, they're planning on purchasing down there, why can't they purchase it?
They can't.
So why are?
You, you do get a little bit of control if it goes through the land bank, because then you can put- you can put, you can dictate what the property's gonna be used to.
Right.
And maybe that's what you're gonna do.
I really don't care. I mean, they have good intentions. I just, what.
With the land bank, though, like, it has the stipulations, like, you are going to do this.
I mean, it's there for as long as it's used for purposes of building a.
I think part of it as well is, is some of these, if we buy them, there is demolition that has to be done on them.
Therefore, the land bank should buy the metal, the sheriff's sale.
So by buying it at, at the auction, we buy it out of a land, our land bank account money? Is it, how, what's the legality in it?
Or the city.
City could buy it, transfer it to the land bank.
Yeah.
Or the land bank can go and.
The land bank does have some money.
And then you get a sheriff's title.
You get a sheriff's title.
You get a sheriff's deed, yeah.
I mean, I'm okay with doing that. This other way seems like a headache.
Because I guess we just need to figure out when the sale is, figure out what we're gonna spend on property. If, if we are interested in certain properties and send somebody, by the marshal.
Give them authority to.
And the property owner always has the option of by paying the back taxes and getting.
Up until the.
Up until the time they open the auction.
Yeah, so there's, there's no right of redemption.
No right of redemption, okay.
There is a minimum $30, I think is what all properties start out at.
Right.
I wish it was tomorrow.
Well, if we'd done this earlier, we'd sure have fewer, fewer problems to clean up that have been bought at sheriff's sale.
And one of the, the problems that we always had when we dealt with it in Pratt County is, is sometimes we get people that you don't want to own the property that buy it. And oftentimes you'll see the same property with the sheriff's title, kind of.
Something I'd like to know is how much money we do have in there. If we plan on buying more than one property, which I don't have that plan. I thought it was just one. There's only one that seems good to me. But I'd like to know how much money there is. I mean, can you find that out?
It's $10,000.
Budget, I know we budgeted.
Well, but I think we added money to the land bank, didn't we? Or did we, we budgeted for demolition.
Are we going to have an executive session to discuss certain properties?
If you want to, we can. I.
Usually they put out a list.
I've got the list.
Okay.
Yeah. If you guys want to discuss the properties, we can go into executive session and discuss them.
We can look at how much we do have.
And the purpose of that is so that the city isn't showing its hands as far as what its property is targeting.
Right.
'Cause if somebody knows what your limit is, and somebody knows what property you're targeting, I mean, they can.
Right.
Outbid you, please.
All kids going into executive session?
So how long, how long of an executive session? You guys have to make a motion.
We need to amend the agenda to add the executive session, too.
Yeah, just make a motion to.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss land bank.
Agglomeration area discussions related to acquisition of real property.
That's what he said.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Return.
8:52. Return at 8:52.
Do you want this?
Call it, make meeting back to order. If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion to adjourn the land bank.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? All those? Carries.
All right. Reopen this meeting in the city council. If there is no more business, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries four up.